Being at Fifth and Broadway, I am very excited about it because as we watch things pop up along Broadway, we get the connector points and it will absolutely be great when we're full and that energy can spread out and the other streets can work towards us.
During the restoration, the original hardwood floors, grand staircase, and brass handrails were all left intact. But there is one big change: the rear windows returned into a mural.
The back of the building reminded me of the building within the old movie Rear Window. So I chose to use those images from that film to replace the missing windows.
Now, the developer is counting on that artwork and other modern touches to draw new tenants to this building, which sat vacant for several decades. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The Broadway Arts Tower is the first large commercial office building to open on South Broadway since the Great Depression in the 1930s. Native Americans have a lot to celebrate during American Indian Heritage Month. The city's festivities got underway recently at City Hall. Yana Kay takes us there.
This traditional Native American tribal dance represents family strength and unity, and helped kick off American Indian Heritage Month at City Hall. Participants say the event gives them a chance to show their appreciation to their loved ones.
I have family that takes care of me, and I love my family and friends because they're like older brothers and sisters to me.
Native American Heritage Month also recognizes many of the contributions Native American tribes had on Los Angeles, dating back to the 1700s. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, who was sworn into the Wyandotte Nation by the tribe's chief, Billy Friend, last June, said events like these help remind Angelinos of all the sacrifices made by Native Americans.
I think as we mature, we recognize and value more and more our own heritage, the sacrifices that our ancestors made, and that fortifies us and makes us realize that the very DNA that we are made from is made stronger by those that came before us.
Earlier in the day, inside council chambers, O'Farrell recognized the Torres Martinez Desert Keweeah Indians for all the work they do on behalf of Native Americans.
Thanks to your organizations in your city and in your county, they've made it a success for us.
And the hope is, these kinds of celebrations will keep history alive for future generations. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Native American Heritage Month was coordinated by Councilmember O'Farrell and the Native American Indian Commission. A new mural is helping bring character and life to a street that's been a vital part of the Northridge community. Rasha Goel has more on how this mural is reviving the past but setting a new vibe for the future.
For the Northridge community, this new mural is more than just artwork on a wall.
Not only is it the first mural that's going to be part of the history walk of Northridge, but it's a sense of the community coming together.
Northridge Sparkling Campaign, a beautification organization, and the Museum of the San Fernando Valley brought on artist Tim Cornelius to create the mural.
Because my dad's a fine artist and he loves to paint trains and depots, I thought I would do this as an homage to him.
The mural, known as Zelzner Train Depot, is painted on the side of a CD store on the corner of Reseda Boulevard and Rand Street. It's the first of 11 historically themed pieces of art envisioned for Northridge's Reseda Boulevard, part of a plan to revitalize the city's main business corridor.
We're all looking for a change, to take this community, to take the Reseda, the corridor, the gateway to Northridge, and create what you're starting to see today. And there's a vision, and there's a future.
It reminds me of the past, and I have fond memories of the past. My dad grew up in a valley and all that, and it's just lovely.
Reseda Boulevard, from Parthenia to Plummer, is also one of 15 local neighborhoods, recently designated by Mayor Eric Garcetti for his Great Streets Initiative, which aims to turn this corridor into a more business and pedestrian-friendly district. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
And a lot more is happening in the valley to improve quality of life. A major thoroughfare there just got a street lift as city officials make it more pleasant for drivers to get around. Yana Kay has more.
Driving north and southbound on Van Nuys Boulevard between Magnolia Avenue and Ventura Boulevard just got a little more enjoyable thanks to a Los Angeles City repaving project.
You don't hit the potholes, you don't hit the ruts in the street?
Crews resurfaced 1.3 miles of street on the heavily traveled stretch of the Boulevard and did it in just two days by using two paving machines at the same time. And for local drivers, it didn't seem to be too much of an inconvenience.
Most of the streets have been paved, and there's no problem. So for a day or two, you take Hazeltine or some other street and get around, you know? This is no big deal.
In addition to the repaving, upgrades include new lane stripping, repainted curbs, and sidewalk cleanup.
Our approach right now is to save streets while they are in somehow a fair condition. If we decided to wait, let's say, two more years or three more years, this $600,000 project would become a $2.5 million project.
City officials say they were able to save about 25% on the entire cost of the project. That's because crews were able to reuse and recycle most of the asphalt. Ramps to and from the 101 freeway to Van Nuys were also shut down, allowing Caltrans the opportunity to conduct routine maintenance on the exit ramps. A brief pause in traffic for a smooth ride for years to come. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
It's been 16 years since Van Nuys Boulevard was last resurfaced. With California facing the worst drought on record, many folks are stepping up and doing what they can to save water. As Yana Kay reports, some community members are leading by example.
The Los Angeles Police Department's Topanga Station in the San Fernando Valley welcomes visitors with a tranquil and peaceful setting, complete with drought-tolerant vegetation and California native plants. It's all thanks to LAPD's Topanga Restoring Its Urban Ecosystem, or TRU, Community Landscape Project, an ongoing effort to transform the station's landscape into a sustainable and drought-tolerant garden.
This has been done pretty much entirely with donated funds and volunteer labor.
And for all their efforts, community members and volunteers were recognized recently during a Community Choice Awards luncheon in Woodland Hills.
They do so much in the community on so many levels, not only keeping us safe, but this environmental stewardship through the TRU program has been just fantastic. So Officer Reddy, thank you so much.
Because of the drought and severe heat, the station's previous landscaping dried out and died. So in 2011, the station partnered with community groups to install a drought-tolerant ecosystem.
We don't want someone to come into a building that looks like it's a vacant building because the weeds and everything is dead. We want to make sure that it's a beautiful, enjoyable location.
Ten local business owners who have improved their properties were also honored at the event.
Anything that any of us can do to help with that water recycling and drought-resistant planting and all of that is going to be very helpful in our efforts.
Efforts that don't only make the community look more beautiful, but also help save precious water. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The TRU project is currently seeking donations in order to install a new irrigation system. A night of compliments for South LA students inspire them to greater achievements in school and in life.
I feel great to be honored.
Fifth grader Mila Perkins receives a medal for a job well done. The most improved student of the year at Manchester Elementary School gets showered with compliments at a lavish awards dinner, where she and her family can bask in the spotlight.
You know, celebrate my little genius here and inspire her just to capture the world with her imagination and just the beauty within her, you know? And I'm just really proud of her today.
Over 70 South LA students received the Star Treatment at this year's State of the Eighth Awards Gala. Eighth District Councilman Bernard Parks, with his wife Bobby, explains.
What we give is an overview of our accomplishments, but we also honor many of our schools in the Eighth District, many of the classes for the best grade point average in each class, and the most improved student.
This marks the final State of the Eighth event for Parks. As councilman, he'll be termed out of office in July. During his tenures hosting the dinner, he's noticed that many of the most improved students go on to earn highest GPA awards in later years. He largely credits positive reinforcement from parents and from events like this.
I improved in my work and stuff, and I worked really hard.
I know my son works hard in school and, you know, does his very best, so I really appreciate it. And I know he does too.
A handful of adults also received the red carpet treatment for helping the children improve their grades and succeed in school.
Councilman Parks says he's touched when former awardees approach him as adults and tell him they're now in college and pursuing their dreams. City leaders raise awareness on Alzheimer's disease. The city's first non-residential roundabout could ease traffic flow at a busy intersection, and enrolling in an LEDWP payment plan online. These stories in City Beat.
The city council recently helped bring public awareness to a disease plaguing 5 million Americans today: Alzheimer's.
There are over 15 million unpaid caregivers, and that equates to over 17.7 billion hours of care, to the tune of over $220 billion.
The hope is for awareness to result in funding for the treatment of and cure for the disease, but also for financial and emotional support for those who care for those with Alzheimer's. A roundabout is in the works for the community of Boyle Heights and Council District 14. The latest renderings were unveiled for the $4.3 million Cinco Puntos traffic circle to be constructed with the existing All Wars Memorial on East Caesar Chavez Avenue as its centerpiece. Cinco Puntos means "five points" in Spanish. While popular in Europe and on the East Coast, where they are also called "rotaries", this roundabout is thought to be the first non-residential one here in Los Angeles. Instead of a traditional intersection, a roundabout requires motorists to slow down and merge into a circular traffic pattern, looping them around to their exit. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power customers now have the ability to enroll in payment plan options online at ledwp.com. LEDWP's payment plan helps customers who may need a little more time to pay their utility bill. In the past, the only way to enroll in a payment plan was to call the LEDWP customer contact center and speak with a customer service representative. Now customers can visit ledwp.com 24 hours a day, 7 days a week to enroll. But LEDWP customers must have an online account and meet eligibility requirements to enroll.
You can find LA history in some unexpected places. Case in point, a fast food joint in Wilmington can now call itself a historical landmark.
Wiener Schnitzel has been dishing out fast food in a hot dog bun to hungry customers for decades. And now the very first Wiener Schnitzel in the nation, located in Wilmington, is finally getting its due. The city of Los Angeles designated the fast food stand built at 900 West Pacific Coast Highway a historical landmark.
We're here to officially celebrate the first Wiener Schnitzel in the entire world here in Wilmington, California, and also recognize John Gallardi, who is an entrepreneur who came here in Wilmington in 1961 and decided to open the first hot dog stand.
John Gallardi was only 23 years old when he opened his first store not long after working at Taco Tia, a restaurant owned by Glenn Bell Jr., creator of the Taco Bell restaurant chain.
So John thought about it, and he thought, "Well, I can't do tacos. That would be competing with my friend, his best friend at the time, Glenn Bell. I don't want to compete with the McDonald Brothers, so I'm going to do hot dogs."
There's stories for days about this place that I probably can't get into. Just kidding. Yeah, 1961, it opened its doors and, you know, it set the precedent for the rest of the chain. And for it still to be standing today, and for the city of LA and Wilmington to honor it and classify it as a historical landmark is a huge deal, and we couldn't be more excited.
Bob Trujillo, who along with his real estate partner, went into business with Gallardi and built this very first stand, as well as some 500 other Wiener Schnitzels.
We grew too fast, and we got in a lot of financial trouble. Couldn't pay the bills, and so we sent a letter out to 200 landlords and said, "We're not paying any rent. If you have any questions, call." Well, they all called, and so it took us about five years to work it out. But then we put in a "Buy a Coke, Keep the Glass" promotion, and it tripled our sales. It was 15 cents for the Coke glass. So we sold 15 million of those, and that's what saved our company.
One smart promotion and countless hot dogs. Now that's the stuff fast food legends are made of.
This is the fourth historical designation in Wilmington, and this Wiener Schnitzel in Wilmington is only the second roadside food stand to receive such an honor from the city. A local recreation center receives a new gift, one that will hopefully inspire families to exercise and enjoy the outdoors. Rasha Goel has more.
Residents are celebrating the grand opening of the Fred Roberts Synthetic Soccer Field in South Los Angeles. The new field is a major renovation at the center.
You know, they covered an old dirt field that used to be here, and we made some improvements on the exterior, some benches there, a little exercise cycle. So it's a real family-friendly.
It's looked totally different. It looked better.
The new synthetic field is the 28th field to be operated and maintained by the Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks in an effort to provide better resources for the community.
By putting one field, it's like serving three additional soccer fields because it could be played on nonstop.
An amazing park like this will provide a lot of opportunities for youth soccer players out here to get out there and run around and work hard.
Aside from inspiration, officials say synthetic fields save roughly 1.8 million gallons of water per year. Perhaps that's a goal worth kicking for. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Other renovations at the Fred Roberts Park include new security lights, a walking path, and new fencing. In this week's list of things to do, the reindeer romp at the LA Zoo, a free family art workshop, and an exhibit called Hothouse.
There is no shortage of holiday things to do here in LA. For starters, the ever-popular reindeer have landed at the LA Zoo for the holidays. They will spend Christmas and New Year's here before flying off on January 4. You can pay a visit anytime from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. daily, except on Christmas Day when the zoo is closed. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lazo.org for details. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery holds free family art workshops every Sunday at the Barnstall Art Park campus. The workshop on Sunday, December 7, from 10 a.m. to noon, will touch on the gallery's current LA Islam exhibits. Families are invited to work with diverse materials to create vibrant artworks influenced by the traditional motifs and contemporary images from two exhibitions currently on display featuring Islamic art. All ages are welcome, all materials are provided. Barnstall Art Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. Go to barnstall.org. Currently on display at the Watts Towers Art Center is the exhibit Hothouse, on display until January 11. Artist Allison Sarr's Hothouse addresses the tug of nature on our bodies and psyche. Two sculpted pieces, Poison and Fallow, two female figures, frame the scope of the work in the show. Poison's abdomen reveals a flourishing scene, alive with moths, cocoons, and caterpillars. Fallow's abdomen, however, reveals a dark and somber scene of death and infertility. The Watts Towers Art Center is located at 1727 East 107th Street. For gallery hours, go to wattstowers.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals, united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move, along with, because of, and in spite of, the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
A single ember that escapes from a wildfire can travel more than a mile. You can't control where that ember will land, only what happens when it does. Get Fire Adapted now at fireadapted.org.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
Sergeants, would you please call the members? Have the members report to the council chambers. Members, if you're in your offices, would you please report to the council chambers? I want to thank Mr. Buscaino and Mr. Corretts for being members of today's on-time caucus. Sergeants, get on the phone, call the members, and give me their ETAs. Sergeants, please call the members. Have them report to the council chambers. Members, if you're in your offices, please report. Mr. Bloomingfield is here. I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield, Buscaino, Englander, Corretts for being part of today's on-time caucus. Mr. O'Farrell has arrived. He can be put on the board. Man, boy, you are fast. She beat me. Mr. Bonin has arrived. Mr. Laban, report to the council chambers. And Mr. Price. Mr. Fuentes, please report to the council chambers. You know, I expect Mr. Laban to be the first one here out of the three. Hey, Mr. Weezer. Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December 2nd. I'd like to welcome everybody to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretts, Corcoran, Laban, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves, Bonin seconds. Next?
Committator resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves, Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise, we'll be led in the flag salute today by Mr. Buscaino.
Please face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's run through the agenda.
First, Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 1B to December 16th, and Item 16 to January 7th, and Item 28 to December 9th.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order?
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. For the record, the address for Item 1A should be 8940 West National Boulevard instead of 8490.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm sorry, the cards on Item 1A and 3.
Okay, can we vote then on the remaining?
Yes, it's Item 2.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And that ordinance will be held over for second reading for one week, if not reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next cluster of items.
Items 4 through 13 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, Mr. O'Farrell?
10 through 13 called special. For Paul Corcoran, please.
Okay, 10 through 13. Members, let's then prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Corretts, did you want to introduce somebody? You had that look on your eye. Well, I do want to acknowledge then that we have former state Senator Kevin Murray with us today. If we could give Senator Murray a round of applause. I know that Paul and I served with him, Mr. Sadio. Any other members around? Well, anyway, he's served with at least three of us. Yes, Mr. Laban?
I just want to say, Kevin, come up here right now. He's with the Wine Guard Foundation, which has for many, many years has helped Los Angeles in many ways, and he's serving a special role, leading the Wine Guard Foundation.
He's a good man and a good friend. Thank you for stopping by. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
Items 14 through 30 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Cards?
Cards on Items 14, 18, 23, 27, and 29.
Okay, let's hold those items. And Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call 14 special.
Hold 14 for Mr. Corretts. Members, any other specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And, Mr. President, at this time, since there's 12 members, would you like to reconsider Item Number 2 of the ordinance and Item Number 9, which has an urgency clause?
Well, you are just really very, very fast today. You beat me to the punch. I saw it. I am so impressed with you guys. Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now let's actually vote on the item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, let's take a couple of items until we're ready for our presentation. Let's start off with Item 14, called special, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is appointment of Mr. John Merritt to Innovation and Performance Commission. Well, I haven't seen any innovation or any good performances lately, but I don't know what they do, but I would point out that we did check, as you know, I was up here once when you appointed someone who was later arrested for possession of child porn. So, we checked on Mr. John Merritt. We can say without a doubt that he has no record of child porn, so we don't object to him. I don't know how many of you up there, who else, has child porn collections. However, we must point out that the mayor makes Mr. Merritt and all other appointees sign a letter of resignation, undated. If they vote against the mayor on any issue, then he puts the date on there and kicks him out. Tom Bradley never did that. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known John Merritt for a long time, but I won't hold that against him.
We won't either.
Thank you. He's had an interesting career in both sort of right brain and left brain occupations. He's been a television producer for a number of years, and now a financial advisor and vice president at Smith Barney. But most notably, he's someone whom I've spoken with over the years, and has many great ideas for how government could be run better. And so, when this position came up, I recommended him as someone who I thought would be the perfect person for this position.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. With that said, members, why don't we prepare to vote on this item? Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 18, Mr. Herman, I believe. Yes, Item 18, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll now move to Item 27. Item 27 was called special by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, if you come forward on Item 27.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighland.org. This concerns additional tree trimming needed in Council 14. In other words, they used up all the money for tree trimming, and it wasn't enough. This is Jose Weezer. And as we see, excuse me, Mr. Weezer, who does not belong to the Gloria Molina for Mayor for City Council Committee.
Let's stay on the subject. That has nothing to do with the subject.
Okay, let's stay on the subject of Mariposa Landscapes, who got a contract, I understand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, no bid contract for $24,000 to $100,000 extra dollars to trim the trees in the City Council 14, Weezer's district. I don't know who had sex with him over there, if they did. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Weezer, are you ready for your very important presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. In fact, Mr. Weezer, can I get some quiet? Let's show respect to our young people.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know that you've been a...
Mr. Herman, stop the applause. Okay, go on, Mr. Weezer.
You've been a fan of our youth football teams throughout the city, and I believe you've coached as well.
Yes, 13 years, six semifinals, one championship. National championship.
And today, I'm very happy to be here with a great organization in the El Sereno Community of Council District 14, an organization that provides a support system for our young people, provides them with some training and a skill set that they will use later on in their lives, no matter what they decide to do. And we're bringing them into council today because we are honoring them for their 20th anniversary, and they are the El Sereno Stallions Football and Cheer Organization. The Stallions were founded in El Sereno in 1994. While a board member of the El Sereno Youth Development Corporation, Mr. Steve Martinez worked with partners to create the organization. He was subsequently elected as the organization's first president. The 1994 season began with just the junior midgets and Peewee football teams, which were coached by Rowdy Viscaena and Stanford Tucker. The original cheer team was coached by Maria Caseras. Throughout the years, the El Sereno Football and Cheer Organization has touched the lives of thousands of El Sereno youth and families. It is also the largest parent group in El Sereno. Some pupils of the program go on to Wilson High School to continue playing football or cheer on the sidelines. In fact, some go further. Anthony Denham is a product of the El Sereno Stallions and now plays for the Houston Texans in the NFL. But more important than these success stories is the everyday impact this organization has on the community of El Sereno. As a league, the El Sereno Stallions promote good sportsmanship, respect, and friendship. Additionally, they encourage academic excellence and maintain a minimum GPA requirement for participation. In addition to their primary function as a football and cheer league, the group is very active in the community. The Stallions and their families consistently participate in community cleanups and volunteer their time for the betterment of the El Sereno community. We're fortunate that their cheerleaders are always willing to provide energy and enthusiasm for those early Saturday morning cleanups, as well as the football team. And I am honored here today to congratulate them, and further to recognize that the team I just heard came back from a Las Vegas tournament and won first place with it. To the championship. Let's give them a big round of applause for that. All right. So with that, let me present to the Stallions this resolution signed by all the council members and our mayor, congratulating the El Sereno Stallions for 20 years of providing service to the El Sereno community. Congratulations.
My name is Joaquin Bustamante. I am the city athletic director for the organization for 2014. For 2015, I will be the city treasurer. I will be following Ms. Roxy Malgar, which will be hard to follow, but I don't have a child in the organization, but with the help of Mr. Weezer, Council District 14, and everybody else in the council, in honor of the Stallions, we honor and appreciate everything you guys have done for us, because these kids, that's our objective, is to give them an opportunity to get off the streets and give them an opportunity to be somebody, and hopefully to be in your seat one day. And that's my objective, is to give them an opportunity to say, there is a way, but you have to work hard, and you have to go to school, and you must do discipline and be here and thrive. And I appreciate everything that has been given to us by Mr. Weezer and his staff. Julio, Jenny, everybody, thank you so much. They've helped us a lot. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. You know, Mr. Weezer, to, you know, just say this in front of the parents and the coaches, being a coach was probably one of my greatest joys, and to this day, nothing makes me more excited than when I see a child that is now a man and call me Coach. I mean, so you have that to look forward to when you see these little youngsters grow up and be responsible individuals. In fact, Edo, everybody knows Edo, who works for Mayor Garstetti's staff, he was a player. He calls me Coach to this day. So anyway, Mr. Weezer, I turn it over or back over to you.
Great, thank you very much, Coach. And as was mentioned, hopefully one of these kids will come and sit in one of these seats today, just not this year, because the filing deadline to run against me was today. So, okay, just don't file today, okay? But congratulations, and it's really a community effort. They, I see a number of parents and coaches out there volunteering at their time, and it's year-round. It's not only during the football season, it's year-round as they fundraise and prepare the teams, and they become a part of a larger family, and that is great to see when we have the Stallions become a family in and of themselves that provides for the El Sereno community. Congratulations to y'all on keep doing what you're doing. Felicitatus.
Mr. Weezer, let's wait a minute. Mr. Weezer, you have another athlete, former player and coach, somebody that feels real sensitive about this? No, Mr. Sadio.
Oh.
Then we'll go to Mr. Laban.
East L.A. and Silesian.
Silesian, go Mustangs, all right.
You know, I want to take a second to applaud the parents. I came up, bobcat, a cougar, played at Roosevelt. I sit here now as a result of that experience, and I say to you that nothing is more important than the presence of the parents. And I know these young men and these young women sometimes don't want their parents around, particularly at this age, you know? They're like, eh, drop me off at the corner, right? I'll go with my friends, kind of vague when the game starts. But let me say to you, there's nothing more important to them than seeing you there. And I look back on my time, and my brother's time, and my brother's time, and my sister's time, nothing was more important to our family than that 20-year period that we spent involved in Pop Warner football. And it taught us discipline, it taught us respect, and it taught us teamwork, and ultimately it taught us how to be successful citizens, good athletes, but better citizens. And so, I want to applaud the parents, because you're doing a lot more. You're teaching them how to be the future leaders of our city, and so I commend you and encourage you to continue it. Even when sometimes they don't want you there, be there, because when they look back, that's what they're going to remember, and that's what they're going to appreciate. Thank you, and God bless, and good luck.
Mr. Football, Mr. The former center from John Marshall High School, Tom Laban.
Thank you very much, but I want to first, where's the center for the team? We've got to recognize the center. Who's the center? It all starts with the center. He's in, ah, he missed it. Tell him to take a lap. Take him to take a lap. Mr. Weezer, thank you for recognizing this young people, the girls and the boys. It's very important to bring them here. They'll remember them. very important to bring them here, they'll remember this their whole life. There's nothing like the camaraderie when you're together as a team, so it's so important. What Mr. Wesson said, I would bet, uh, a hundred million dollars, it's so true, if someone's walking down the street and someone says, hey, Mr. President, he doesn't get excited, says, hey, Coach, because there's nothing like a coach. I did that to my coach a couple of years ago, who's now in his late seventies, and it was as if it was a lightning bolt, it just made him feel so good. So there's nothing like coaches. So coaches, I thank you for that. But also, let me talk about El Surino. El Surino has a great history, and Wilson High School has a great history there, and all the sports that have been played at Wilson High School, which used to be in the Eastern League, now in the Lordton League, they often dominate because of what has happened in the past with the youth football and other sports there. So, Mr. Wezar, again, congratulations to you. Here's the trophy, hold it up high, and, uh, big congratulations to the Stallions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could just read this here in council chambers for our record, it says, "The National Youth Football League Pigskin Tournament Champions, 2014." Congratulations and love and memory, our age. Congratulations to all of you. Wow, this is what we're gonna do now, we're gonna follow this young man to the back.
Anyway, guys, congratulations.
Madam Clerk, could I have item number one, please, called?
Item number one A, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item.
Item number three, call special for cards.
Christopher Wilson.
Good morning, Council. My name is Christopher Wilson. I'm the applicant's representative in this case. I just wanted to briefly say thank you to all the parties involved, the neighborhood, the midtown, uh, NoHo Council, um, Mr. Doug Mensman, and Maya Zajewski for helping us out this far, and we look forward to opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Next item.
Items ten through thirteen, call special by Councilmember Krikorian.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian. I can't hear you, so I'll give a minute. Okay, good, thank you very much. Mr. Engler.
Item seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, fourth with, please.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, fourth with, by the fine councilman of the twelfth district. Thank you, Mr. Engler. Because it's raining today, we need a few extra minutes, I gotta, Mr. City Attorney, may I call? Some public comment cards now? Thank you. General public comment, one minute. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. I was out there for the Christmas parade, it was a disaster. Santa Claus arrived at Hollywood and Vine an hour and a half late. Uh, the mayor would not let his wife or his kid use an umbrella, 'cause it's not macho, and he was the only one with a microphone, talking to a very, very thin crowd, which was almost all Hispanics, because blacks, whites, and Asians are afraid of rain. Uh, it was, and I want you to know why it rained. It rained because God Almighty punished you for arresting three hundred protesters in the street the other day, uh, because of Ferguson. And I'm telling you now, everything has changed, because, as you know, I've gotten up here and talked about FBI investigations. FBI raided L.A. USD and took out two hundred boxes. They're going to put Daisy in jail, and after that, they're gonna go after you. The FBI is in town.
Eddie Jones, Jr.
Good morning to this very distinguished board. I'm Eddie Jones, President of the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association, and, uh, I'm just here this morning to say that I really like the way that the city handled the situation with the protesters, and I hope that a better relationship can continue to be established between the Los Angeles Police Department and the constituents and the stakeholders and the city members and the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. I received a phone call from a few officers who want to continue to build a relationship between the community and the police, and I think it should be such a very major priority to establish a better relationship between the community members and the Police Department. All the phone calls that I've received over the last few days since the non-indictment of the officer who shot Mr. Brown have been all about building a better relationship.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. Three times poly brutality on me. Let me tell you something, what I tell the chief, November fifth, two thousand and two, when they present Mr. Branton, I say, "Congratulations for the new police chief." You say you wanna start with a gang member, you better start with your own gang. One day I say, "Chief, go back to New York, because from there you're coming from, you never will control the gangster with uniform that kill babies in Colorado, like Devin Brown in Susie Peña." Next time I say, "Please, Yankee, go home, don't come back no more." The chief answered me, "I don't wanna stay too long," and I say, "I hope so." In that presentation, I say, "Vaya con Dios with the Yankees in New York, you're the champion, good luck." This is what I say to the chief in Charlie Beck in the fifteenth of January. Chief, a lowdown with the homeless of downtown, because their lives are very, very sad, you send the police officers, Colbert Killer, to chasing them, and you are breaking the Constitution, your United States of America, because they are not animals, they are people. Three times poly brutality on me.
Thank you. Jose Martinez. Madam Clerk, please note that, uh, we're going back on the agenda now, Jose Martinez is not here. Uh, let's go back on the item. What's the next item?
Items ten through thirteen, call special by Councilmember Krikorian.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, uh, we know that for, uh, much of the last two decades, California has been fighting to keep film and television production jobs, uh, here in Southern California, in California. And for much of that time, it was a losing battle, as over forty other states offered very lucrative tax incentives to, to try to draw those, uh, jobs away. That trend started to change, uh, in two thousand and nine, when California enacted the first, uh, California, uh, film and television production tax incentive, uh, which I authored and then which was extended, uh, by Mr. Fuentes, when, when he was a member of the Assembly. Uh, and the good news is that just this last year, that incentive was dramatically increased and expanded. It was more than tripled in size, uh, and the scope was significantly increased, thanks to the work of San Fernando Valley Assembly Members, Boca Negra and Gado. Uh, and I, I should mention, with a very strong advocacy and support of our mayor, Eric Garcetti, who was instrumental in making sure that that, that bill passed. The result of that is that we now are starting to see the trend reversed. Production is going to start coming back into California, and Los Angeles needs to be poised to take advantage of that influx in production. Uh, so I'm very pleased that the matters before you, uh, are going to improve Los Angeles's footing in getting that production back here and keeping production here where it belongs. I wanna say first, uh, how much I appreciate Council President Wesson's, uh, leadership and understanding the importance of the council's role in this, uh, by, by creating an ad hoc committee on film and television production, and I appreciate his confidence in, in, uh, assigning me to chair that committee. I wanna thank council members, uh, Curran Price and Mitch O'Farrell, for their tremendous work that they've done and leadership that they've shown throughout the work of the ad hoc committee. Uh, we've had, uh, four hearings of the committee, we've taken comprehensive public comment, uh, from, uh, all stakeholders in the industry, and the matters that you see before you is the result of those many, many months of work and cooperation and communication, uh, with, uh, the, the men and women who do this work here, uh, in Southern California. Uh, so, what you have before you is item number ten, which has created, uh, a customer service survey, and Film L.A. will actually be surveying, uh, the permities for film, uh, production here in Los Angeles, so that we can identify what are the barriers to more production, what are we doing right, uh, what are we doing, uh, not so well as a city to be able to facilitate production here, and this will be an ongoing feedback loop that will give us an opportunity to hear from our customers and let us, uh, actually, uh, improve our service to the, to the industry. Item number eleven, uh, is a motion that Mr. O'Farrell authored, which would call for a comprehensive, uh, survey of city properties, uh, that can be utilized advantageously by the industry. Uh, this might be, uh, properties that could be used for locations, properties that could be used for parking, for base camps, uh, the many other needs that, uh, the industry has throughout the city, uh, and that is already in the works. Item number twelve, importantly, calls for a five-year extension of our film, uh, permit fee waiver program, which has already produced great results. Uh, it costs about three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in waived permit fees, but what we get as a result is what you see almost on a weekly basis, right here in City Hall and in city facilities throughout the city. You see production happening right here, uh, in, in our own buildings, and it sets a good example, uh, but it also creates real jobs and real revenues that more than make up for that small, uh, cost. Item number thirteen, finally, is kind of a laundry list of department-specific fixes. We've asked for reports back from all of the departments that interface the most with the industry about ways that they can improve their service, uh, and you have before you reports from each of those departments, DOT, Wreckin' Parks, DWP, L, uh, the Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, uh, the CLA, uh, in ways that we can do a better job of making city services, uh, better available for this industry. Now, members, taken together, these mo- these matters, uh, these four items that you have before you, will send a very strong statement to the rest of the country, that Los Angeles, uh, intends to remain the entertainment capital of the world. Los Angeles intends to be, uh, the, intends to be the place, uh, that is the center of film and television production, not only for California, not only for the United States, but for the entire world. Uh, so with that, members, I respectfully ask for your eye vote.
Thank you. But Mr. O'Farrell, the great councilman of the Hollywood area, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna rise and thank our Chair of the Ad hoc Committee, and that is Mr. Paul Krikorian, for his leadership. Uh, and these four measures are a way for the city of Los Angeles to demonstrate, um, that we support the signature industry, that we support middle-class job growth, that we support making the industry stronger than it's ever been, and, uh, with it, we're working in partnership with the county and, very importantly, the state. I also wanna commend Assembly Members, uh, Boca Negra and, uh, Gado for their work on AB eighteen thirty-nine. Uh, and it's important that we take a stand here in Los Angeles, uh, and, um, participate and enhance and lead the way, uh, for the industry in Los Angeles. I also wanna thank Felipe Fuentes, Bob Blumenfield, Curran Price, and Herb Wesson for their leadership at the state level. So, this really is all about, um, recognition that, uh, this industry must be supported at the local level, that we are leaving no stone unturned in terms of the resources that we can, uh, provide the industry, so that we can, um, uh, keep filming locally, keep the jobs locally, and stop the bleeding of jobs out of the state and out of the country. So, again, um, I wanna just commend our Chair of the Ad hoc Committee for the great, uh, job that he's doing, uh, and, um, I also urge an eye vote on this, um, really what is a job preservation and job creation, uh, series of measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Felipe Fuentes.
Mr. President, uh, and thank you, colleagues, in particular Chair Krikorian, for, uh, chairing this very important ad hoc committee on the film and TV production jobs of Los Angeles, and for moving this package of, of motions forward. I think it's critically important. I wanna underscore something that has come up time and time and again, about how important this industry is for Los Angeles. In the recent election cycle, it was an issue in my, uh, district where folks said that all of this isn't really helping Los Angeles, and I think it's important for us to really underscore how the industry helps Los Angeles and California. It's not just the film production that some of us see when we're traversing streets in Los Angeles, it's not just the permit fees that are collected, it is so much more than that. Here are some very good examples, I think, that demonstrate that we are moving in the right direction. Most recently, I had the opportunity to tour a site in my neighboring Council District Six, Ms. Martinez's area, where a brand-new soundstage is gonna straddle CD seven and CD six. That new development, that new construction, that, those new jobs that will reinforce what we're trying to do is critically important. It adds to companies like PRG that's in my district, that, uh, currently do all of the lighting needs for the industry. And more recently, in Council District Four, a company who got too big for its size because of its real success, is moving to Council District Seven, and they not just house and rent, uh, lighting app, uh, apparatuses, but they are going to expand their manufacturing of all of that here in Los Angeles. All of that, I'm lucky to say, I'm the benefit of that recent investment in Council District Seven and the northeast San Fernando Valley, adds to what we already have, which is, uh, a lot of, uh, property, uh, businesses where they have props, a lot of the catering industry, Star Wagons in my district and Silmar, all of that is part of the local economy, all of that is jobs, all of that is revenue for, uh, Los Angeles, and all of it is rightfully here in Los Angeles. So it's more than just the production, it's more than just the names, it's more than the release of a new film in the lottery. It is about jobs, it's about revenue, it's about making sure that Los Angeles is a vibrant, healthy economy for this very important industry, and I wanna commend my colleagues for this important, uh, package of motions that are moving through, and thank you, Mr. Labange, for, uh, the reminder about how important this industry is.
Well, thank you very much, and Mo Richardson is that company over, uh, eighty years, and their jobs have still stayed in Los Angeles. I do have a request, Mr. Fuentes, we gotta make another street sign for North, North Hollywood, 'cause it's coming your way. We had Hollywood, uh, North Hollywood, now North, North Hollywood. Paul, Paul, let me get to the center table real quick, I know Mr. Krikorian's gonna close, just give us an overview, if you would, on what this means to you as our representative.
Well, the, the information that's coming out and will come out of this is gonna be really helpful for us to continue to fine-tune what is a really, really well-working city program for filming. Uh, the ability to get information back from the community, the ability to have better communication with departments, um, always makes things better, but I do wanna say that we use the city of L.A. as an example virtually everywhere, uh, we go in our other clients to talk about how well it is working here, and the fact that your interest remains high in making it better all the time gives great incentive to the industry to keep soliciting their work here in Los Angeles. So we're very grateful to the committee and the council for its long-term commitment to this industry.
So important, Mr. Krikorian, to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, let me just take a moment to thank, uh, Mr. Odly and all of, uh, his staff at Film L.A. for the great work that they've done in, uh, working with us on this. Also, Eva Bittar, the citywide film coordinator and industry liaison, and the mayor and his staff, of course, um, IATSE, Teamsters, SAG-AFTRA, all the other labor representatives who've participated in this, our location managers, the studio representatives, uh, it, it, this has really been a collaborative effort to try to find practical solutions. This has really been a collaborative effort to try to find practical solutions that'll help. And I just want to underscore Mr. Fuentes's very important point, because when people talk about runaway production, too often, members of the public think of that as being something that affects big studios, famous people, rich people. But when we lose production to other places, the people that are hurt are not the people who show up to work in limousines. They're the people who show up to work in pickup trucks. The people that are hurt don't carry briefcases. They carry lunch buckets. These are the jobs--
Add gaffer's tape. Add gaffer's tape.
And gaffer's tape. These are the jobs that we're keeping here. This affects the small businesses of Los Angeles. The studio representatives, it doesn't really matter whether they do the production in Los Angeles or in Minnesota or in Louisiana or in New Zealand. The people who care are the people who have good, middle-class jobs. They're probably never going to walk on red carpets, but they're going to be able to feed their family and stay at home and participate in their local schools and support their local businesses when production stays here. That's what this is about. That's why it's so important that we act today on these measures.
Well, Mr. Krikorian, thank you for your leadership, too. I just want to say, members, the worst complaint I ever get as a council member is someone who's complaining about filming in their neighborhood and they work in the industry, and I don't do anything about it when they do complain, but I have got those complaints. So, it's the worst complaint, but it has happened. This is good job, Mr. Krikorian, all the leadership there, and Mr. Fuentes, Mr. O'Farrell, as always. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes, and forthwith on all those matters. Next item.
Item 23, special for cards.
Donna Perman. Hi, sure. Two minutes.
Okay. Oh, solving cold cases, okay, with DNA. Well, it seems like that we need to be able to solve cold cases because there's too many cases that don't get done, too many people that, too many murders that are out there. And so, and while I'm hoping that, well, civilians over time, that's okay. Well, I'm hoping that money is being well-spent and it's transparency. That's the only thing I asked for, is transparency and make sure that the money is actually going to be used to solve crimes and not just to give an executive's pocket and not just to, yeah, people that are on the desks. So, we need to go exactly where it needs to go to be solved. Of course, if people were able to arm themselves, we might not have this problem of having so many crime out there, and they want to make it difficult for people with their guns, and I don't think that's right. And before, you know, so, let's solve the crimes, but let people arm themselves, too. This is not right to take away, to make our--
She's not talking about this item now.
All right, Ms. Pearlman. Mr. Herman.
Residents of Los Angeles, communication regarding public safety for DNA program grant and award and program contracts for relocating grant funds has been the city's inappropriateness to use DNA to resolve crimes. Millions of people have been jailed due to the falsification of criminally being placed in jail. So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, what are you doing to stop and solving cases in the City of Los Angeles? Yes, as a DNA program grant award, we need more students from USC and UCLA to clash in to collaborate with the idea of solving crimes instead of throwing DNA cases away because all of you can't do your job, your performance. So if you can't pay LAPD or the fire department--
To investigate the situations that must be probable in your hands, I say to you all you Angelinos, we need the fire department to do DNAs, we need the police department to do DNAs, and if we do not solve cold case, what good is it for the hard-of-hearing children that left? They're unsafe. The DNA can be found almost anywhere, even on Mr. Mayor Garcetti's boyfriend Drake or even among his wife. But I'm not saying not to look into the DNA, but I'm demanding you investigate the DNA and use our authority, the law enforcement, and the FBI to pursue justice programs for all Angelinos. And again, my hands are up in the air--
Not talking about this item.
All right, John Walsh is the next speaker.
Most of the DNA kits concern semen from rapists. Now, the LA Times and some other news media, a year ago, said that the LAPD is, what, five or six years behind? There are rapists walking in this street who have their DNA right now in the possession of LAPD, but the two private contractors that were hired in a sweetheart deal for, to inspect and to categorize the DNA and to expose them are years and years behind. And here are the names of the companies: Orchid Cell Mark and Forensics Incorporated. Do these private contractors who are years behind, and they're not going to say anything up here because their wives and children aren't going to be the ones raped. It's going to be you out there and your children and you yourself that will be raped. Again, even the LA Times points out that these rape kits are sitting there, and is there anything here about, has there been any investigation of these companies? Are they doing a good job? Are they doing a bad job? All we know is from the media, from the reporters who took the time, that you are, what, several years behind, and the rapists out there want to applaud you, Mr. Parks, and applaud Mr. Corretts for not prioritizing rape and prioritizing only people sitting in the street on Ferguson. Arrest 300 rapists, not 300 demonstrators. HollywoodHighlands.org for the information. DNA now. Hire more people to do the DNA.
That completes the public cards. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Next item.
Item 29, special for cards.
Donna Perman.
I know why you're not posting it if you definitely want to be able to get this reward, but I'm fine that you probably won't get anybody that's going to go for even $10,000 because it's not, $50,000, sorry, because no one's going, it's not worthwhile getting killed over $50,000 because you won't even get to enjoy it. So, you know, snitches get stitches. You know, people are not going to come forward on murders, and the folks probably won't even convict the person in half the time, so, you know, you're going to have a real problem with them coming back, and that's why that people need to be able to protect themselves and not have guns taking apart in your house or some ridiculousness rules on bullets. You know, you got to be able to protect yourselves. Look what happened over there in Ferguson, people burning down their own towns. Someone could have said, hey, stop. Of course, you know, nobody was there stopping them, so--
She is not talking about this item.
All right, Ms. Pearlman, thank you. Concludes your remarks. Mr. Herman.
I'm correct, the young lady should have re-corrected her comment back, Mr. City Attorney, for the record. However, due to lack of time, it's the very truth about reinstating awards for unsolved murders such as the poor gentleman, Mr. Cohen Harvey. Snitches get stitches has always been the issue of the City of Los Angeles and its law enforcement. Violence, violence, and no offense, Mr. Corretts, but violence is a result of us offering rewards to people for the violence that we've created in our beautiful city, which is Los Angeles. And yes, I wear my red, white, and blue, the skull of truth, to admit to you that your performance for the reinstating of rewards for unsolved murders is a joke. I'm not optimistic at what you can do, nor am I going to be optimistic in what you should do, but the City Attorney knows damn well that the office of the city clerk and the sum of $50,000 is not enough to resolve unsolved murders. So, maybe we should spend a million dollars of the taxpayers' dollars since we got to find Men in Blue, Mr. Parks, Mr. Busciano-- And Mr. Englander-- --who can solve the problems in this issue. So again, I subject no approval to this matter unless there is an agreement to all the taxpayers that we, law enforcement and the fire department, take the snitches for stitches and allocate more money for this reward. Thank you.
John Walsh, you have one minute left.
As you know, last time I was up here, I said that there was only one reward issued in the past 20 years. Mr. Corretts did point out that in Century City, that's west of La Brea, in the white city, not east of La Brea, in the minority city, that he caught one hit-and-run driver, white man running over another white man. You'll get caught. And then Mr. Parks said in his 12 years, he had two. So, maybe it's four in the last 20 years. Now, how many rewards do we have? I had them counted up. 379 rewards in the last 10 years, and you have four of them. And you know what? The gangs don't care when I say this, because the gangs know that you aren't ever going to get tough on them, and you are going to have these phony rewards.
That completes it. We have Mr. Corretts who wants to speak on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. The LAPD would like to reinstate this reward motion in the murder of Harvey Cohen, who was 80 years old. There's concern in the Encino area where he was murdered that the perpetrator might strike again. The family would also seek the closure of apprehending the perpetrator of this heinous crime, and the request was made by Detective Frank Correo in the West Valley Police Station, and so I asked for your eye vote to continue trying to track down the perpetrator of this terrible murder.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Very important. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Next item, Madam Clerk, will be public comment. Matt, please. Is there a Matt here? Matt, please state your full name when you speak, if you would like.
Hey, I'm Matt Edwards. I'm here to address this body because I believe you've committed a violation of civil rights and privacy by requiring gun shop owners to electronically submit sales of ammunition to the LAPD. City Attorney Mike Furus sent a letter to this body stating that since a statewide law in reporting ammunition sales, which would have conflicted with your move, was recently struck down by the court, and said this council now enact their own version of that law that no longer conflicts. By trying to circumvent civil rights and privacy issues in this country, you're going to expect a fight back from the people, and those on this council have a duty to uphold civil rights, and if you don't want to do that, then you should just stick to being on the board of Women Against Gun Violence, which I know most of you are on that board. Laws matter, and cutting down the laws just to get at the devil will someday leave even those of you naked in the wind.
Tom, I want to pronounce your last name correctly, Tom. It's a little tight writing here. If you could help me. Tom Gates?
That's Tom Gavicki.
Gavicki, okay.
Hi, I'm just going to make some general statements, essentially just to remind this body that your responsibility is to protect and promote the natural rights of the citizens of Los Angeles and of the United States. Chief of those is self-defense, and I would have you look honestly at the laws that you, the ordinances that you push to see whether or not they actually hinder someone from actually being able to defend themselves or to purchase a firearm lawfully. And then also, I find it funny that this council sits and talks about economic development when in the very same session you passed ordinances that hamper businesses and put other regulations and restraints on people who are just trying to earn a living. You're hypocrites, every single one of you. Thank you, that's all.
Donna Perman.
You go on forever, and we can only speak for a minute. Anyway, Obama should have told the people to go home over there in Ferguson, because those people are burning stores, looting stores, shooting guns, and destroying people's livelihoods. You know, it's never good to burn and loot, and especially we're doing it to their own people who live in the area, who depend on those businesses. So that's not right, and I want to tell you that Emperor Obama succeeded his authority on immigration while he says he can't have an executive order stopping deportation, but he makes laws without Congress, yet he wants millions of immigrants to have amnesty, especially with social security numbers. That's not temporary, that's permanent. Five million of immigrants will come and taking away jobs from people, especially illegal immigrants and American blacks and American Hispanics, bankrupting the city. That's wrong.
That completes the public comment cards. Madam Clerk. No, but here's what I got to do. Get to the microphone. You got one minute, but you better fill out a card, put your name on it the next time. I'm not going to tolerate this. One minute, Mr. Herman.
Well, I do apologize for writing Mr. Biggert's on there, but I am not built to sit. Still, I am not built to stand in line all of the time. Let us learn. I've learned. Trust me, I am learning. The first two gentlemen is talking about how you should be doing city business with ordinances. Instead, you violate the magistrate law of the state of California, not only in the Brown Act, Mr. Englander, but also, Mr. Corretts, and the actions you take towards the public. 54950 to 54963, you violate our rights for just two effin' minutes, and I'm not using the Eric Garcetti hockey game word of it or the PG-13 event, but I am not built to stand silent. My first amendment right will allow all of you to learn, and trust me, I'm learning every day.
That completes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
For item 28, there is a request to reconsider that item to change that to be continued to Friday, December 5.
All right, let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll. Now with that matter before us, let's vote on that.
And without objection, you can continue that item to December 5.
Without objection. Thank you for all your work, Madam Clerk. No other items on the agenda at this time?
Mr. President, council has motions for post and a referral.
So ordered. Members, any announcements? It is raining, members. Make sure you take care of your districts, make sure your field deputies are out there. Do we have Mr. Bon-- Do we have, uh, Mr. Bonin?
Send item number nine, forthwith.
Nine, forthwith, Mr. Parks. We have adjourned motions. All rise for adjourned motion. Ms. Bartidas. Thank you for all your work. I was just thanking you for all your work. Mr. Parks?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of Mickey Champion, who passed away November twenty-four, two thousand fourteen. Uh, she was born in, uh, Lake Charles, Louisiana, in nineteen twenty-five. She was raised by several family members, and she first, uh, started singing at the Lake Charles Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, where her grandfather was the bishop. After graduating from high school, she married Norman Champion. In nineteen forty-five, she and her husband moved to Los Angeles. The move was the beginning of her singing career. The marriage, uh, ended shortly after that. Originally, she was known as Little Mickey Champion. She soon became active participant in the busy Los Angeles nightclub scene. In late forties and early fifties, her activities expanded beyond Los Angeles, including appearances on Johnny Olsen, Johnny Otis, Percy Mayfield, and Roy, Roy Milton. Uh, she also recorded for Modern Records. Uh, she later married Roy Milton, a bandleader, and from that union, she, they had a son, uh, by the name of Jeffrey. In nineteen sixty, she retired from performing, focusing on raising her children. For the next two decades, she worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District, occasionally singing at special events. Over the last decade and a half, she's had three, uh, CDs that were published, uh, and they still are on the market. Champion suffered a series of strokes five years ago, moved to the assisted living center, remained at the West Side Health Center until she passed away at the age of eighty-nine. She survived by her two sons.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. On this side, Ms. Regaliter.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I adjourn in the memory of a true hero. Memory of Roy Paul, who passed away peacefully at the age of ninety-three in Granada Hills. Was born in nineteen twenty-one in Minnesota. Roy moved to Los Angeles after graduating from Greenway High School, where he eventually became a manager at Bendix Corporation, an American manufacturing and engineering company. An ingenious entrepreneur, nineteen fifty-one, Roy founded Paul's TV in Granada Hills, the oldest existing business in the neighborhood, selling and repairing televisions and other electronics. Roy demonstrated courage and service throughout his life, serving in the U.S. Army, Thirty-Sixth Infantry Division in Europe during World War II. He was awarded a Silver Star, a Bronze Star, and two Purple Hearts for his acts of heroism and bravery. Dedicated to serving his community, Roy served as president of the Granada Hills Rotary, the Granada Hills Chamber of Commerce, and in addition, he was the founding member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW Post Twenty-three Twenty-three. A thirty-four-year member of the San Fernando Valley Elks Lodge, fifteen thirty-nine. Roy, along with his lovely wife of sixty-four years, Grace, founded the Fortunate Family Group, sponsoring free dances every Friday night for families with adopted children. And as an avid horseman, Roy also took all those kids on overnight horseback rides throughout the valley and into Santa Barbara. Roy's greatest joy was spending time with his family, horseback riding, camping, fishing, and teaching everyone to water ski. He is survived by his children, his children Sharon, Robert, and Nancy, grandchildren Michael and Holly, twin sisters Joyce and Joy, and numerous nieces and nephews. Roy always had a smile on his face to express love for everyone through his generosity. His family ask that you pass along a random act of kindness to another in his memory. A memorial will take place, uh, sometime in January at the San Fernando Valley Elks Lodge. Thank you. May, uh, Roy, uh, rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Regaliter. Ms. Bartidas?
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Roxanne Helen Clayton, fifty-three years old, who tragically departed on November twenty-third. She's remembered in the community for her amazing dedication and passion in serving students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. She was born and raised in Sacramento, California. As a child, in her early years, were ones of confusion, frustration, um, temper tantrums, and crying drugs, until they discovered that she couldn't hear. Roxanne attended American River College and California State University, Sacramento, before she moved to Los Angeles in nineteen eighty-two. She graduated from Cal State Northridge with a bachelor's of arts degree in liberal studies in nineteen eighty-five, and a master's of arts degree in special education in nineteen eighty-eight. She also received a regular education credential, a special education credential, a cross-cultural language and academic develop, development credential as well. With her residual hearing, she and her sister were still able to hear music then and loved to listen to John Denver, Peter Frampton, Fleetwood Mac, Neil Saucata, and Rod Stewart, to name a few. On January of nineteen eighty-nine, she was hired to teach at Mul, Multman Street Elementary School, special day class, where she taught for twenty-four years. She then transferred to Molten School of, of the Deaf, where she took pride in teaching her students in special education. She survived by her mother Violet, her son Pacey, her sister Renee, her brother-in-law Ray, her loving partner Kathy McLeod, and all her Molten School teachers and students, seasoned alumni, and the greater deaf community members. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Members, I'd like to ask, we adjourn in memory of Dolores Wong. Dolores Wong was, uh, preceded in death, uh, by her husband Delbert Wong, who was the first Chinese-American appointed to Superior Court, and the library in Chinatown is named Delbert Wong Square. But it was Dolores Wong who was a matriarch of a family. You all may know her, one of her many sons. She has three sons, Kent Wong. Uh, Dolores lived well into her nineties, a beautiful person, lived in Silverlake. Her son Dwayne went to the same school I did in the neighborhood, and to hear the stories at the memorial last Friday at Forest Lawn was an outpouring of love from the Chinese-American community. Uh, her struggles in life, as all know, the Chinese-Americans, and how they were treated through the mid-part of the century and beyond, and how she taught people to, to do better and do things for others, it really was a tribute to a very, very special person. I ask, we adjourn in memory of Dolores Wong, a great Angelino. Mr. Sadio?
Dolores was a, um, a real community leader, uh, the strong woman behind, uh, Delbert. She, um, besides Dwayne, Shirley, Kent, and Marshall, uh, great family, um, great civic leader, and truly someone who, uh, will be missed. Very gracious woman, very lovely, gracious, kind woman, and, uh, it's reflected in all her children, and they all have that spirit of service and kindness, and so she will be missed tremendously.
I'd like you to join me on that certificate, Mr. Sadio. Thank you. Members, this concludes today's meeting. Serve the city well. Keep your deputies working in the field. Make sure all the drains get, uh, unplugged.